Okay. Good evening. My name is John Motola. I am the, not by choice, but the Chair of the Board of Finance Audit Subcommittee Meeting, and we're here today, March 2nd, 2023, for our meeting. And I welcome everyone here. The first item on the agenda is call to order, which I already did. The second item is to hear, consider, and approve the minutes of May 5th, 2022, and January 27th, 2023. I think we need to take them separately because I was not here for the January 27th, 2023 meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2022. Motion, Ms. Leclerc, seconded by Ms. Charlton, all in favor. It's unanimous. And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 27th, 2023. Ms. Leclerc made the motion, seconded by Ms. Charlton, all in favor. And I am abstaining because I was not present at the meeting. Let's move to item number three, to discuss and review of 2022 audit process with Joe Sintefani of PFK O'Connor Davies and the audit process moving forward. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Leclerc makes the motion, seconded by, I'll second it. And so that's what we have before us. I see Joe Sintefani, you're, can you hear us, Joe?
It's a little tough to hear, yeah.
Yeah, I, John, I would agree. I'm not, I hear Joe perfectly. I wasn't sure if you were, if you're right in the mic or not. It's hard to, hard to make out what you're saying.
Okay. How's this? Is this better?
Much better, thank you.
All right. I was too far away. I apologize. So we have this item before us, and Mr. Schmidt, Jared Schmidt is here also. If you want to come up, Jared, it's up to you. I think the, I missed the last meeting, but the idea was just to discuss and review the audit process for 2022, to discuss whether or not we had any issues, kind of look at it postmortem to see, you know, if there's anything that we can do better to move this, this along. And certainly, Ms. Leclerc, Ms. Charlton, please chime in if I'm mischaracterizing why this item is on the agenda for, for today. Oh, Caitlin, I didn't see you there. How are you, Caitlin? Thanks for joining us. Go ahead, Ms. Charlton.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I guess from my perspective, I would just like to, in the spirit of looking forward, understand how we can do a better job getting the draft audit report ready in a more timely manner and giving the Audit Committee additional time to review and have questions responded to. We do realize that this year, this past year was, had some challenges because of the, the implementation of the new lease standard, which added some time to the process and also just some unavoidable resource issues. But I think once the process, it seemed to me, and I could be wrong, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but once we decided to extend the deadline to January 31st, it seemed like a lot of things got pushed out to January that, you know, might have been able to get accomplished earlier had we, had we maybe planned better. So I think what I was hoping to hear from, from Joe is, you know, what, what was it outside of, you know, resource issues that, you know, what particular issues caused the audit to get delayed? And is there something we can do this year to help that? I'll just give one, one quick example. I know in the past, you know, we've at times had, had actuarial information, holding up the audit as the last thing that was available, or, or some information from the Board of Education. And to me, those are, that comes down to communication and making sure that the people who are responsible for providing that information know what our deadlines are and that they're being responsive. So I think if we could start out, unless someone else has a different idea, with an understanding of what the, kind of the late-breaking information was and if there's any reason that we can't, you know, do a better job in getting those things more timely this upcoming year.
Okay, so I went back and looked at kind of some of the bigger things that, that we got a little bit later in the process. And we talked about the leases, and that was something new. And, and, you know, that's, that's going to be easier because now it's just an update going forward. I think I did mention at the Board of Finance meeting that now we have another standard, the SB 96 for software subscription services. Same exact concept, has to be implemented next year. So that, that process, you know, one of the keys to making sure there isn't a delay for '23 is, is to start that process as soon as possible, gathering all those agreements and building the worksheet. What we're seeing though, that the biggest area where software as a service is used is in education, so it's going to be critical to get them going on that so this budget process is done or that type of thing. So ideally, all that data would get gathered, and I would have it by the end of summer at, at the latest because it, there's going to be some volume to that depending on, you know, being a very large district. But there's a lot of different software as a service, and most of them are three-year deals or five-year. And so it's just the gathering process. I think that's what was a slower process this year. So I think key is to kind of have that gathered, we'll say, by end of summer. The other area was compensated absences. Again, it's not a complicated part of the audit, but I think just to, to new HR people was something we didn't get till, till mid-December. And then, you know, you mentioned pension and OPEB. Those reports were, I think one was, OPEB was available at the beginning of the month and then pension in the middle of the month. And that, that's, those are kind of big standards, and there's a lot of accounting and a lot of disclosure. So you did have a new actuary last year, so, but I can't speak for them, but that could contribute to the timing. But, but that timing needs to be more like 11-1 than not 12-1. So from a planning perspective, to be able to have those reports by 11-1 would give us enough time to do, again, there's a lot of government-wide impact, and, and you've seen the 30 pages of footnotes that need to get put in and then tested. The other big item that the process was started late, and we'll, I'll set it up to be more through a confirmation process, was the environmental liability. And maybe it's not as, as complicated next year depending on what happens between now and year-end, but that's something we will start the process to get the calculation as part of our normal June 30 confirmation process. We'll draft a, a letter, which we do usually for landfills, but if we make that request in, in July, then hopefully we have the information in September at the latest. And then the other area, it's more of an issuance thing, but it does tie into that we need to make sure we have the information, was, you know, the legal letters, you know, most of, you know, and again, it's not unique to Fairfield. This is our biggest battle of getting reports out the door. But if we put a request date or a request date to the response, we need the letters back by December 15th. And we don't get them back until the finance director's on the phone and yelling and screaming that we need it. So again, it's, it's a problem with all our clients, but, you know, it'd certainly be easier if the attorneys would just honor the, the request date and provide data they requested. So if there's a liability that shows up, we have time to deal with it. So the point of kind of getting it more timely. So and then obviously, I can't issue the report until they show up under professional standards, so. But as far as the Audit Committee draft, we can give you a draft, but that, you know, that could change it. It rarely happens. But, but those are the, the big things that were, that delay the process. And most of it is just setting something in to make the request sooner and, and then talking to, you know, we're relying on pension OPEB. Just a, part of it is driven by the town and the board have to get the data timely because then, kind of just like my process, they usually estimate a six-week process from when they get the data to when you get a report. So, so it's kind of on HR on both sides to get all the data to them timely so that they can do their thing and then be able to produce a report by, you know, the target would be 11-1 to give, give us plenty of time. So those are the, the five things that I, you know, when I look back of, if we can back those up, the draft is done sooner and there's more time to, to do that. Again, and illegal reps is just more of a confirmation process, but it would help to get them back timely and that be scrambling to get those in before we can release the report.
Any questions, Mary, Lori?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, and thank you, Mr. Sintefani. Do you, what is the current process we have now? Do you provide a request list to the town with the dates that you're asking, you know, for at the outset of the audit? Is everyone clear on what these deadlines are?
In our planning process, it's not a specific request list with a date, but if, if the plan is to be closed by October 15th, then we would have everything by October 15th. We certainly can get that ahead of time. So we can formalize that, like I don't deal with HR directly to get compensated absences. So in the environmental liability, again, we hadn't confirmed it in the past, but we can change that process. So, you know, it's kind of when we come down and we'll say, do our planning. It's okay, when you, what date do you expect to be closed? And that's when we would expect to have all, all the information. We certainly, again, compensated absences. On July 1, that calculation can be done. It's just, for some reason, again, not just in Fairfield, it's not something that's a high priority and, and we're getting a lot later. But, so I think maybe it's just, you know, communicating to those departments that finance is relying on to feed them that data, that internally there's some sort of request list that we need this. But, but certainly, I have a basic list, but, but it's more just managing through finance to get the information to us.
Okay, yeah, maybe, I think it might be helpful, particularly with this new software subscription service standard. Maybe if we have something with a little more clarity on dates that we can communicate to everyone. And as you said, things like compensated absences, you know, rather than just saying, you know, let's get all the information by September 15th or whatever it is, if there's anything we can do like that, you know, that would be helpful. It, it's just tough. I mean, obviously, we'd like to have the financials issued on time this year and give all of ours, ourselves appropriate time to review them. And just to have the Board of Finance know what the, you know, the final general fund result is, you know, in terms of surplus or whatever, because oftentimes we do take action with that. So that would be great. And, you know, anything that we can do to help, or if you're not getting things that time, just, you know, I, I think we all know we can probably push to make that process work a little better. So just kind of keep open lines of communication. And just for clarity, so on the environmental liability, you said you're, you actually confirmed that number. Who are you confirming that with?
You know, I, I didn't send a confirmation request, so I guess I'm proposing in '23 for me to ask directly and not ask management to get the data. So the last two years, management kind of drove getting that information, you know, the first year because I wasn't aware of it totally in the process. And this year, just didn't get confirmed. So I think if I send a request in July with all our other confirms, that that, they can start calculating. Obviously, they got to connect with the town to, because if they're going to bill you or whatever they're going to do, but, but I can make the request earlier because indirectly I got it confirmed, but it went directly to the town. So as far as the calculation, so that's really just kind of what I need is the calculation to make sure, you know, it's not understated. So we will ask directly and then, and then we'll have a follow-up process. If, if we don't have that by the end of the summer, then that's something that, that we need to, you know, to get a hold of them and, and get it in time. But I think the process didn't even start so very late.
Just to say, I think Joe hit a lot of, hit the points well, so, yeah, that's it.
Okay, go ahead, Caitlin. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Joe, I wasn't sure if you wanted to ask a question about rounding that you kind of asked me.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, just some of it just takes extra time because your reports is in thousands, but our, all, all our data and our work is, is not. So I just, I don't know if that's an issue. It can be done that way, but we spent a lot of, a lot of time on the dollar, the $1,000 roundings because things don't round nice. So it's not a, a good way to automate that. So I, I mean, you are a, a big community, and it's common to do it thousands, but you are, are my only client that does it in thousands. So that's the way it was done before, before me. So I did say, in some ways, it's easier not to do that, but I don't know if anyone has any thoughts. But it's not critical. It can be done, but it does add a lot of, we'll say, time to our process because things don't foot, they don't add because Excel is not as smart as it thinks it is.
If it saves time, I honestly could care less if it's in full dollars, so.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Joe. I think we're done with this agenda item.
All right, Tor. Good night, everybody.
Have a great night. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, item number four, is update from internal auditor Connie Saxel on 2022 internal audit outstanding issues. This, this item was presented, and correct me if I'm wrong, to the full board at a Janu-, at our January meeting. And there were, I believe, four or five outstanding items. And just want to get an update from Ms. Saxel about those outstanding items. So Connie, thank you for being here. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, John. Hello, everyone. Connie Saxel, internal auditor. I contacted all three department heads addressed in each of the three audit reports for follow-up on the outstanding issues discussed at the last Board of Finance meeting, which were WPCF, Registrar of Voters, and the Solid Waste and Recycling Transfer Station. All follow-up audit responses were provided to me via email exchange, and I'm happy to share those emails with you if you'd like to read them in entirety. So please let me know. However, I will recap the responses to you. The first one is WPCF. The first follow-up involved an explanation for the reduction in septic waste at the WPCF. Mr. John Bodie, Superintendent of WPCF, submitted an email response to me on January 17th and has attributed the reduced revenue over the last few years as the result of the following. The septic hauler that used the WPCF the most was older, became ill and passed away, and thus contributed to reduced revenue. The WPCF has a system that requires trucks to unload through a machine. This is time-consuming, and 3,000 to 4,000 gallon trucks take time, which discourages septic haulers from using the facility. The WPCF is not close to main routes such as I-95 and requires septic haulers to travel through town to get to the facility, which discourages them from using it. An attendant is required to be with the truck at the WPCF while dumping, which adds to the time required to dispose of the septic waste. I further discuss the reduction, the reduction in the septic waste along with the reasons provided by Mr. Bodie with the interim superintendent of WPCF, Mr. Ron Wallace, who confirmed that these reasons were reasonable and accurate. Do you have any questions about the WPCF? Okay, I'll continue on.
Connie, can I?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we have questions. I, I definitely want that email. You can send it to all the members.
Yes.
And, Ms. Charlton, I saw your hand up, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, thank you. I, I appreciate those explanations. I guess what, what I'm not clear on is they did mention, I think you mentioned at the beginning that one of the haulers, you know, somebody passed away, and I don't know what ended up happening to their business. I, I guess that the part that I, I still have a question about is what changed? Because all of the things that you mentioned, you know, whether it be the inconvenience of, of our location or the process that we have, et cetera, you know, those, you know, our rate structure. I think the concern we had was that nothing changed, really, versus prior years when all these same conditions were in place, and yet we seem to be, you know, getting more usages of the facility. So let us take a look at the email and, you know, we'll, we'll circle back in case, you know, we want to, you know, ask that you maybe validate any, you know, any of those explanations.
Yes, at the very least, I could call a few of the septic haulers and inquire as to why they're not using our facility any longer.
Yeah, I think, I think that might be helpful, especially since we've had some turnover in the department. And I know that we had, you know, part of that audit recommendation that came from that report did have some, you know, you noted some issues with the fact that there was a, you know, a billing system that was in place over there, and checks were being collected and sent into office mail to the town.
Right.
And at least previously, there wasn't, you know, a, a process in place to make sure that those checks were deposited or somebody wasn't looking to see that they were deposited. So I, I can't recall whether, you know, I know, I know that you had recommended some policy changes, but, you know, I, I couldn't recall if any of those, you know, if you were able to, you know, identify any issues, if, you know, money ended up in the wrong space or wrong account or miscoded or anything like that. It just, it seems, it just seemed like such a rapid drop-off. So anyway, why don't we take a look at the email and then maybe circle back? But I do think it would be worthwhile to maybe independently validate some of those responses.
Yes, definitely. I will look into that further. The next item is Registrar of Voters. The follow-up primarily involved the status of the pink postcard mailing by the Registrar of Voters. Mr. Wagner submitted a lengthy, detailed follow-up email response to me on February 6th. I will read you the first paragraph of his email in entirety. As you indicated on April 4th, the audit that you were asked to perform by Mr. Schmidt does not involve any question of town budgetary purchasing or fiscal policy compliance. And my invitations to identify any relevant town policy or statute pertaining to this audit or the mailing of information to voters have received no response from your office or from the attorneys you reference in your request. As such, I understand this matter to be closed, and while I saw the recommendations made in the report, I did not see anything in it that requires compliance or further response. And then it, the email went on further, and I'll recap those comments. He has heard nothing further from the state on this matter regarding the corrective letter since that office canceled the meeting on March 17th, 2022. The specific mailing discussed in the audit was properly budgeted and approved for the current fiscal year by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM. I took special care, as documented in your report, to publish information about the program on the town website. And then he concluded, "I also appreciate," as you noted earlier, "that you are acting in this manner at the direction of your superiors in the finance department. With that said, I object to the misuse of your role in the town audit process by the administration in its continued efforts to curtail the ability of the registrars to communicate with voters and exercise the authority of the office." So that was basically his response in regards to the audit report. Are there any questions?
Ms. Charlton, I see our hands up.
Yeah, so I guess two things I picked up on. So one, this whole audit was initiated because the Secretary of State's office complained about the form of this, this mailing that was done, right? But they have not, if, if I heard you correctly, it's been almost a year, and they, it sounds like they've, I mean, for lack of a better word, dropped the matter. So they haven't been in any further contact with the town?
Yes, I believe that is what the case at this point.
And part of this, you know, I, I realize that we get internal audit updates. Like, I always felt like this one was a little bit funny because it really doesn't have anything to do with the Department of Finance other than the fact that it was, it's an issue covered by the internal audit. But I guess I'm not, and, and we can, you know, update the board. I'm really not sure what, as an audit committee, we're supposed to do with this one if the Secretary of State is no longer pursuing it. And unless we hear that there's some type of liability or, or other issue, you know, related to the town, it seems like it was a, you know, a one-time issue. I'm not, I'm not really sure what, I, I know we asked you to follow up on this, Connie, but I'm really not sure where, you know, where this goes from here or if there's any further action required. I don't know if anyone else feels any differently.
Go ahead, Mary.
Well, I thought it was the use of town funds to do a mailing that wasn't approved by the Secretary of State.
Or, I think you might be right, Mary. Or that there was a difference of opinion on what the law allowed. So we, we, we did approve it in our budget that he was able to do this, right?
And, and again, I don't, and this is why I feel like it's, it's, we did approve it in our budget, and I, I understood that the mailing, you know, this, this privacy notice and informing voters of this program where they could opt out of having their information be public, you know, if, if they had a reason to. So for example, if someone was, you know, had a restraining order against someone and they needed their information to be private, they could, you know, they could use this program to opt out of public disclosure of their, of their voter information. I thought I understood, and there's been obvious, there's been some public newspaper articles and debate about this as well, was that the notice was sent out by the registrar. And since that time, the Secretary of State has a form that can be used to notify voters of this. But when, when the registrar did it, no such form was available. So I guess I'm assuming that if we ever have a need to do a mailing again and it does get approved, that the approved form would be used. But that's, that's all I know. I do, I do believe that it was budgeted and we approved it. We may not have known what we were approving exactly. We, it was for a privacy mailing, but I think it was approved. And at the time, at least my understanding is that there was not a, you know, the Secretary of State did not have a competing form that could be used, and now they do. So clearly, going forward, this wouldn't, or should never be done again because if, if we wanted to notify voters, we would use the form that's provided by the Secretary of State's office. So that's all I know, but again, I just, I feel on this one, I don't really know what we're supposed to do. It doesn't necessarily have to do with internal controls or a financial issue, and I'm, I struggle to find the connection. So I had suggested at the last Board of Finance meeting, it was my opinion that this was more of a compliance issue versus a, you know, if, if anything, it would be a legal or HR issue versus a Board of Finance issue. So I don't, you know, I don't know how others feel, but I'm not sure what sense it makes to continue to pursue this at an audit committee level, but that's just my opinion.
Bye, Mary.
So, so I somewhat disagree because I think there was an open issue here, and I want to make sure it's portrayed correctly. And that is this mailing that was done. I don't recall approving it in the budget, but I didn't think it was done for all voters. And I think that's part of the issue, is that if it was sent out to every voter... is that if it was sent out to every voter in town would be one thing, but this was only specifically targeted to a group of 100 voters or something. And I think that was the crux of why this wasn't a good thing to be done and why there's an issue there.
No, I agree. I think, I think the, what we heard was that it was done for a sample of voters to gauge the response rate so that they could budget for a broader program. But again, I don't, you know, to me, I think if this is an issue, if the Secretary of State has not pursued this, I'm not sure what we do at this point, you know, so.
Mary, go ahead and then Ms. Schmidt.
But didn't the Secretary of State give guidance on what, how it should be corrected or fixed? And I don't believe that was ever done.
Yes.
Yeah, we probably should have the, you know, the individual here who's involved in this. But I think that, as I understand it and could be wrong, I think that, yeah, they did give guidance and that there is now a form from the Secretary of State's office that would be used for such a, you know, for this type of mailing. That's my understanding, so. We should not be creating our own in the future, but would not need to.
Go ahead, Jared, I know you wanted to say something.
Yeah, so there was a form previously and that was part of the Secretary of State's issue was that he, the form of that, of that form was not theirs. And Mary's exactly right that he sent it out to a select number of people. And I think that's the connection to the, to the Board of Finance was that it would, I mean, it ended up being a waste of money and also against the rules of the Secretary of State. Also, my understanding is that this is not a closed issue yet and that it's still open with the Secretary of State. But I'm not involved in that end of things.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not either. I just, the only, the only reason I mentioned that it might be closed is it sounds like we haven't heard anything further from them for a year. So, and Connie, you said something about a meeting being canceled. So again, I just, you know, we don't, when we approve budgets, as we apparently did for this one, you know, if there was money in there for a privacy mailing and it was a small dollar amount and we approved it not knowing exactly what that is, I don't fault the Board of Finance because there's always approvals for supplies and materials in every budget. And I don't think we get into that granular level of detail. So, and if the money was wasted, you know, then it was wasted. I'm not, I'm still not sure that, what we're supposed to do with that at this point. I think, you know, maybe the follow-up is if there's any, you know, if there's any issue here from either a budgetary or a liability standpoint from the town that requires our follow-up, then I guess, you know, we should. But I, I'm not really sure what else we can do. It's, in other words, it's not like there's an internal control that is under the auspices of our board that we would like. It's not like a financial internal control. It seems to be more of a compliance or HR thing, but.
Go ahead, Connie.
I'd like to add also that I agree with you that Mr. Wagner should come and speak on his own behalf to, you know, relay his, portray his side of the story as well. And I don't think it was inappropriate for Mr. Schmidt to ask me to go to the registrar of voters to find out what was happening, what, surrounding the pink postcard mailing. Because many times, internal audit does not simply revolve around internal controls, but also around department operations and procedures. And the finance department simply wanted to know what had occurred and just to write a report of the trans, the circumstances surrounding what had happened with the pink postcard mailing and also to provide some recommendations which I thought would be helpful in avoiding this situation from occurring again in the future. So that was the fact surrounding the pink postcard mailing. Any other questions?
Well, I'm happy to, if, you know, if, you know, if the committee wants to follow up and have Mr. Wagner here, that's fine with me. I just, you know, again, I'm not sure, you know, typically, we would be looking for a policy or a process or a control out of one of these audits that we could then, you know, understand what had been implemented. And I'm just, this one is more, I'm just not quite sure what, what else we should do at this point, so.
To me, at this point, it's, it seems like it's a Secretary of State issue and maybe an HR issue. I, I don't, I appreciate, I absolutely.
Maybe ask a question.
During the budget process, you know, and just validate whether there's anything.
Appreciate that you did the work in the audit and pointed out some of the issues. But unless he does it again next year, I, it's happened, you pointed out the issues. He's been apparently told by the Secretary of State that he shouldn't have done what he did. So what more can this committee do on this particular issue? I mean, if, I think, I think Connie, if you feel that it's appropriate to give us an update and you too, Mr. Schmidt, on it, I guess we can leave it at that. But I'm not sure we need like this on another agenda item. So unless, unless the, unless the subcommittee disagrees.
The only thing I could add is if there's a proper procedure that they should abide by for mailings that they do for townwide for, for like they, I'm trying to think of the name of what they call it, when they send out the voter cards on where your voting district is, the polling and location. If there's requirements from the Secretary of State that they should have procedures on how to follow them. And if there's, at times, if there is the possibility that they don't do a full mail and how that, that is supposed to work. So there could be a procedure that maybe could be outlined better.
And also, if there's a disagreement between the two registrars and they can't come to an agreement, that they, I think the remedy would be to contact the Secretary of State and get their advice on the proper procedure or what steps they need to take on whatever issue they may have a disagreement on. The worst thing that can happen, as we all know, is that the two registrars don't get along and they don't work together and each does his or her own thing and that can cause problems. I think we can all agree that that can happen and we want to avoid that, so.
Yeah, the only other thing I throw out is maybe we can, you know, make sure to ask the question during the budget process. You know, again, I don't think we, you know, we typically ever go to that level of granularity. You know, I am, I am, I feel like I remember there was something about a privacy mailing discussed in the budget document. And it was budgeted for and we did approve it, but we didn't necessarily know what that entailed or ask. And again, given the dollars involved, I'm not surprised nobody asked. But, you know, if it's helpful, we can affirmatively ask that question and just make sure that, you know, there's nothing in there that is, you know, contrary to, you know, what, you know, what this audit report recommends.
Okay, anything else? You have one more, right Connie?
Yes, I do, John. A solid waste and recycling facility, the transfer station. This follow-up surrounded the removal of the second checkpoint and the establishment of compensating internal controls at the transfer station. I received a detailed email response from Mr. Cattell, Assistant Director of DPW, regarding the transfer station on January 27th and February 2nd. I also performed a physical inspection of the newly designed traffic flow pattern in operations at the transfer station on February 23rd. I agree with Mr. Cattell that the newly created traffic flow pattern establishes a more efficient and effective manner for customers to dispose waste and recycling materials and appears to be safer for users of the facility in terms of accident reduction and provides greater control over the disposal of improper waste by customers. Now, you may have seen the use of a second checkpoint at Walmart, BJ's, Wholesale, Costco and even Rings End Hardware in Darien, whereby the checker reviews the customer's cash receipt and the contents of the shopping cart. The purpose of this second checkpoint is to establish an internal control over cash receipts and inventory by ensuring that the customer has properly paid the cashier for their goods. The primary purpose of the former second checkpoint at the transfer station was to ensure that the customer properly paid the cashier for the type of waste being disposed. The former second checkpoint also had the capability to review and compare the customer receipt to the actual waste being disposed prior to entry into the facility. I obtained 10 months of data for fiscal year '22 and extrapolated it for a 12-month period. The average cash collection via cashier at the scale house was approximately $29,000 per month. Checks were approximately $3,000 per month and credit card sales approximately $10,000 per month. The balance of the revenue collected for the year was a little over 2.6 million, which came for, from commercial haulers using the prepaid debit system through a program called PC Scale. Therefore, during fiscal year '22, cash collections were approximately $348,000 for the 12-month period at the scale house. The current elimination of the second checkpoint relies primarily on the honesty of the cashier to enter all sales transactions, most importantly, cash sales into the register. If the second checkpoint is not reestablished, then I recommended to Mr. Cattell that at a minimum, install a large visible sign at the entry to the scale house that states, "All customers must have a proper cash register receipt or scale weigh ticket prior to entry into the facility." Mr. Cattell agreed. I also believe that daily spot checking of customer receipts by the attendant now stationed at the top of the hill be performed throughout each business day, which would establish an increased internal control. Management will need to collect these receipts from the attendant each day to ensure that the spot checking is being properly done. Further, there is the capability for Mr. Cattell to perform a reconciliation on a daily, from, of a daily manual log maintained by Enviro employees to a daily truck cycle time report from PC Scale to ensure that the two agree and that commercial haulers are properly going over the scale. The manual log, however, only captures large commercial haulers, not other trucks or customers going over the scale who are not commercial haulers. Further, per Mr. Cattell, this reconciliation will be performed randomly, which is obviously not definitive. Ideally, this function should be performed on a regularly scheduled basis each week. The current cash register has not been replaced, but Mr. Cattell and IT are looking into a new cash register system. And Mr. Cattell is here tonight and he can elaborate further on the new transfer station reconfiguration and elimination of the second checkpoint and other internal controls. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Charlton.
Yeah, have we ever had a recommendation about eliminating cash collections entirely and moving to credit cards as we have with other town departments?
I know that's been spoken about, but I don't know of any town department that has fully eliminated cash collections. And I believe there are a lot of seniors that use the transfer station and prefer to use cash for, to, for $6, you know, household waste disposal. But it is an option to eliminate the cash.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get that some people might refer it, but if we're literally collecting $350,000 of cash in $6 increments, you know, I just, I don't know anybody that in the world that doesn't have a credit or a debit card at this point. So that was my one question. I think that might be, you know, the way to go. And the other question I had was, why at this point do we not have a cash register? I mean, you, you did this report in the fall. What does it take to get a cash register? I thought we were running out of paper and couldn't print receipts. I mean, what, how long does it take to get this done?
Well, I believe Mr. Cattell and IT are trying to get a cash register that directly links to their PC Scale system. And so they're having a, they're actually, Mr. Cattell is going to, I believe, Middlebury in a week or two to see how their operations are running and what type of cash register they're using and so forth. And so the current cash register is, I believe now, just printing out one copy paper, whereas before it had a white copy and a yellow copy. So it still is functioning, but it is meeting its useful life. So they definitely are in a little bit of a bind now to start purchasing a new cash register before the old one totally, you know, becomes dysfunctional.
So Connie, can you just? It sounds like you're satisfied with a lot of the update that you got, but you still have some open items. Is, am I hearing that correctly? So can you just summarize what your open items are?
Definitely, I believe, internal controls could be strengthened. I mean, at the very least, a sign at the front of the scale house notifying customers that they need a receipt before entry. I mean, that's, at least helps guarantee that the customers know that their money is going into a register, they're receiving a receipt. And then having somebody spot check at the top of the hill, you know, just like they do at Rings End, at Darien, BJ's, Walmart. You know, here and there, you pick a few customers, you check their receipt, make sure what they're disposing of agrees. And if you do this every day, eventually, you know, customers know, well, I need to have, you know, pay, have a receipt. And the cashier at the first checkpoint knows somebody's looking. And also the reconciliation that is available, if you, the comparison of the Enviro manual log to the PC Scale report, at least that shows that the truck had gone over the scale and is logged in, in another place on a log. And if the two agree, then you know the person went over the scale. But it only captures commercial haulers, the large haulers.
So how, how would you know that they're doing spot checks? Just based on, I know John Cattell, I've known him for 20-something years, is sitting back there. I guess two questions. Have you gotten a commitment that they're going to be doing that?
Well, I'll let John speak on that. Would you like to come up, John?
You gotta push the button, John.
Thank you. Yes, we do do spot checks up there. Yes, we do continue to do spot checks. One of the biggest things I want to make sure you understand, it's not the elimination of the second checker, it's the relocation of the second checker. The original second checker, when he was in the booth, was unable to verify what they had in their, in the contents of the vehicle or truck or whatever. Oftentimes, you know, it might be, they might have something that had a cost to it that was buried underneath other trash or something else that had a special cost. The second checker now being located at the top where they actually dropped these items off is actually able to visualize and say, oh no, that doesn't belong there. That's over there. Oh, let me see your ticket. Did you actually pay for that? No, you didn't. Okay, now you have to go back down to the scale house and repay it. That was never happening before. Once the person went by that booth where the, the second checker was out on the street, there was no conscious of where he was going, what he was dropping off or what was happening. Now we have a person who's actually visualizing it. We've had very positive feedback from the public using it. That was very organized. They liked seeing the person up there having, be able to ask questions. As, oh, does this go into that area or does this go into that, another area? So it's greatly increased the oversight, the interaction. Even our employees like it because they're not just stuck in a little booth that they never get out of. They're actually out there walking and seeing the people and converging with them to give them guidance as to how to properly recycle or dispose of their trash.
Okay.
I guess, are there next steps on this, Connie? I guess, are there next steps on this Connie? So you, it sounds like you, you still ha, I mean, are you, are you reissuing your report with these remaining recommendations or do you expect them to be resolved and then you're going to reissue your report? I mean, I think you, you said you asked for a sign, a spot check, and then this reconciliation, you were looking for this to be done on a regular basis versus occasionally?
I think the best thing to do is go back and do a follow-up and just double-check to make sure these things are actually occurring and write up a, a follow-up report.
All right. John, you wanted to say something? Go ahead.
Yes. You had two items. One was a sign that is in fabrication. I expect it up by the end of the day tomorrow, if not Monday. The other item that you talked about was how long it took for the cash register. The current cash register is working. It was our biggest concern that it is an old cash register and should it fail, parts are very difficult to get. But it's been working fine, doing what it needs to do. We have worked with purchasing and IT to make sure that it would, the system we go to was in compliance to purchasing requirements for the credit card system and which credit card system or financier was able to support the proper software and infrastructure to meet our current scale needs or our credit card system. So those were items that were going back and forth. We were supposed to be up at Middlebury checking out their system, which one credit card company recently put in. I've been in discussions with that director at Public Works. It was scheduled for last week and unfortunately they, that meeting fell through and is scheduled for thir, next Tuesday to go up there again.
Thank you for the work you're doing on this. I, I guess my only other question, and, and really appreciate that, Mr. Cattell. I think, and also appreciate the work that was done around changing the traffic pattern and, and making that more, you know, user-friendly, if you will, in addition to sort of enhancing the ability of the workers to see what's going on. I guess, and maybe this is for Connie, I do, I do think it might be worthwhile to just follow up on this issue of cash. I, I know that you've told us in the past that we've converted various other departments. I think we're even taking credit cards at the beach now, if I recall. And so I just, you know, at some point, I think, I, I think we got to move in that direction, you know? I don't know about anybody else. I don't think I've had a dollar in my wallet for a year. I use a credit card for everything. I, I think that, you know, it's, sometimes cash is even less convenient, but, you know, $350,000, it's, it's not millions, but it just seems still, just not a good practice to be taking and handling cash administratively. It's harder. We've got to, you know, deal with it, collect it, count it, take it to the bank, reconcile it and do all that stuff. So I hope we can pursue that. And at some point, Connie, it would be helpful to just understand how much cash we're transactioning in other parts of the town as well. I thought we had mostly gotten away from it, but, you know, I, I think that's a, a good direction to move in. So that would be my only comment.
Go ahead, John.
I'd just like to clarify too, that to get rid of the normer that we have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of cash down at that transfer station. That is not the case. It gets, we have at most, we average about $1,000 a day, which is then deposited to the finance department to be in the bank. So I don't want anybody coming to an incorrect conclusion that there's, you know, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of cash floating around there at any one time. For me, for the security.
Being deposited, but yeah, I mean, I guess.
It's deposited daily and I just, you know, for the safety and security of the workers out there. I don't want, I've heard rumors out there of people saying that there's millions of dollars of cash down there and, and that, that scares me.
No, I wouldn't. Yeah. I, I mean, again, I, I appreciate that. And wherever we catch, collect cash, we should be depositing, depositing it daily. But, you know, when you think about it, even that is, you know, there's work involved in that. It's an extra process. It's a hassle. It's, you know, that requires somebody to, to go do that and drop it at the bank and all those good things. So, you know, I just, I feel like that's an area where we might be able to make progress, along with other departments of the town to the extent we're still doing it. And at, at a minimum, it's something I think we should consider. So, you know, that said, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to hear we're not, you know, keeping a week or two weeks of cash around at a time. But, you know, nonetheless, you know, to the extent we can kind of get away from that, that would be great.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is a motion to adjourn. When, when is our next meeting?
June 6th.
Oh, okay. June 6th.
Yeah. Just wait, before we adjourn, if I just wanted to mention, and I, the other item I think that came up that we wanted some follow-up on was we had, if there were questions around Connie's audit for, I think it was Greenway Property Services and how the payments outside of the bid were handled on that. And just Mary and John, for your benefit, we did request from Mr. Schmidt and we did receive a copy of bid waivers, all bid waivers that had been issued last year. And there's a lot of data there and the Purchasing Policy Committee is looking at that data. And for the purpose of understanding, you know, what, what's happening with bid waivers and how we can more intelligently rewrite the policy so that we don't have as many of them, frankly, you know, so that things are, we don't have a, a one-size-fits-all policy that creates the needs for a lot of waivers that should be handled through other controls. So I don't think that addresses the issue that Connie found, which was, you know, we had an emergency, or we were told we, you know, an emergency authorization was used to waive a bid, which clearly was not appropriate. But I think the follow-up is that we're looking at kind of the bid waiver process and what's there. And we had a meeting this morning with Mr. Bremer and others. So, you know, that is, you know, there is some follow-up and process there. And I just wanted to, you know, thank Connie for doing that work and, and bringing that issue up. And we will continue to pursue it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Mary, you have anything? All right. Then entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Leclerc.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Ms. Charlton. We are adjourned and we'll see you in a half hour.
Thanks, guys.